I wonder. So our meetings.
Yeah, we only have the one.
This meeting of the city.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, they are hosting us for this since we didn't have.
That's true.
Okay. Figure out. For the organization.
Right.
Yeah.
I delivered a sign. Your thoughts?
Right off the bat, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, did you go to the other side?
Mm hmm. And like kind of drive back between like how you're trying to drive.
Exactly right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, so really. As it's. Used to be in HOA twenty years ago.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Same market. It was different times.
Yeah. Right.
So at six o'clock.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Tim. Yeah. I don't have a description.
We're just like. Coming. Have you seen him? I was in front of.
Oh, there's a gavel.
Way too much power.
I know.
It is six o'clock. Is everybody ready to get started?
Sure.
It seems like we have one guest on Zoom and that's apparently going to be my office, Kelly. I don't know who that person is, but. So the first thing, first thing I want to say is, it's so exciting to be here. It's been a long time getting here. We, my office prepared an agenda for you for the initial issues. The idea of the agenda is to get formed as an official government and kind of kick off the process. Included with the agenda, some information and meeting package, a couple of resolutions. I'd like you to consider tonight and then a legal status report. Uh, this is something we just do in our office. We keep all of our board informed of what we're working on and what's coming. This one is a little more thorough because it also contains some, some little informational material. At some point, you're going to want to have meeting where you just study what the district is all about. It's a government or government officials. Because of that, you're bound by a lot of rules that we'll talk about as they arise. They'll arise. So, uh, some of that will come up tonight. The first thing we have to do is call the meeting to order. It is, I think, about six oh one. And then, uh, the report on trustees, oaths of office. You have each taken oath and that oath has been recorded with the Secretary of State's office as well as the commissioners. And you've all completed that. So you are official and ready to act as government officials. So item number three, seating of trustees and introductions. I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to meet each other, but we should go around and do some quick introductions.
Okay. Sam, can I just mention some of you a second ago, but. Former library commissioner, member of the foundation board, library champion, really happy to be.
So my name is Anita Twain and I. Yeah, everybody in the. Body and I am library trustee and it's in my third year of that. And, um. Yeah. Pretty.
Uh, I'm Carol Ryan. Um, I was on the L D A C committee. Too many words committee. And the. And yeah, trustee.
Hi, everybody. I'm somewhere about. And so now I'm a library commissioner and I recently joined the library foundation.
And Jenny Teeter also former library commissioner. So good to meet you. You have been working.
Doug Hamilton, uh, I was on older library champions and I'm a member of the library foundation. And yeah, I'm really happy to be here. Parent. Little kid. It's a great place for me.
And my name is Jenny. I am serving my second year on the library foundation board. Um, and. What else? I am a new trustee along with the rest of you and really excited to be here. I'm a big. A patron of the library. So I, you will find me wandering the halls sort of aimlessly looking for books sometimes.
And should we go through staff? Yeah, that would be great. Hey, Chris, you sort of.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm. Chris Barge, executive director of Boulder Library Foundation, just here as a member of the public to support you all and represent the Boulder Library Foundation. We're so excited. This feels like a big moment, uh, in the history of the library tonight. Way to go.
I'm also the city champion. It's nice to see you all.
So first, definitely library. Me.
Maybe that I'm a library. Said, all of you, I know. Were of you for a hundred.
Chris Maschek, I work for the city manager. David Gere, I'm with city attorney's office and I've been working on this project with, which everybody outside of us, a lot of other people as well. Many of you. Um, and I guess our work started with the inclusion of the. Thousand page library master. Some cookie.
Lisa. Yes, I'm Lisa. I support the city manager's office, mostly Chris and the city.
On behalf of everybody, thank you, city staff, for setting some, you guys.
There might be a.
We did it.
Um, I wanted to take quick advantage of a couple of things I've heard just as part of this education process that. Um, some of you are on the foundation and you probably know a foundation is a vital entity, a nonprofit entity. It's governed by both federal and state law, um, very different from what you are. The holder of the library is another kind of entity. I mean, Colorado law, it's a public library. It is not a library district. It has an independent board that some of you serve on. Um, but it doesn't have its own power to tax. And it doesn't have a lot of the governmental powers that you now have as a library district. So you now have three entities involved. We're trying to merge the, the library into the library district. That's really your focus is going to be for. At least through this year and maybe a little longer. So we'll be talking about that shortly. So welcome, everybody. And, uh, like I say, I'm, I'm Kim Seder, uh, been practicing library law now for thirty years before it was popular. And, uh, very excited to have to see this happening for you now. Um, next item is declaration of a forum. One of the things I wanted to talk about with regard to forums, you probably all know what a forum is. There are seven of you. So a forum for doing business, which four. But more importantly, I want you to note that under Colorado law, three of you are considered to be enough to create a public meeting. Public meetings cannot take place under Colorado law. They have to be posted and open to the public. So you're going to hear this again and again. You have to be very careful about three of you talking about library business outside of these public meetings. So even when you, if you email jointly, do not reply at all. Reply to whoever that email came from. If you reply all, you've created a public meeting. It should be posted. And if it's not, you violated. It gets very complicated, but we'll, we'll bring that up over. All of your business now has to take place in the sunshine. Sit in front of people and they have to be invited to the meetings. So with that said, you have a forum because you've all qualified to, um. To serve. You have a, a complete board and it's time to elect officers. Library district has at least three officers, president, vice president, the secretary treasurer, or the secretary and a treasurer. However, you want to do it. Um, there was a little discussion in the, um, status report about what each of those entities does. Eventually you'll create your own laws. In those laws, you will define more such a position. But for now, the president will run the meetings, control the agenda, um, have discussions with, with David, the attorneys and others. The vice president will fill in for the president. The president, if not available. The secretary will just make sure that documents you're required to maintain are being maintained. Not by the secretary, but by somebody. So it's not as huge a task as it sounds, but it is a big deal. And then the treasurer can ensure by looking over financial statements that someone else will prepare. Um, signing checks along with the president. It's going to be up to you eventually whether you all want to sign checks, which you won't want to. One of you should and maybe a second, maybe the eventual library director. But that's all to be discussed in the future. So for now, if you're ready, uh, we can go ahead and elect officers.
I just have a question. Do you have, um, any thoughts on the merits of having separate secretary, treasurer positions combined, especially in startup?
Yeah, I think it's startup. It's simpler to just have one person, but we might have more obviously. What you'll find is over time, the secretary, uh, usually ends up signing documents along with the president. The treasurer ends up signing the financial documents, checks and things like that along with the president or another director. That's pretty much the, the two positions.
The, the terms of these, the annually.
Their annual schedule. So. Good, good question. Brings up another issue. In a few minutes, we're going to talk about administrative matters. Every year at the first board meeting, there are a bunch of administrative matters we have to go through. And we'll give you a, a resolution eventually. I didn't want to do it tonight. That has all the statutory citations and the things you need to do. Um, because there's so many, the burden is by law placed on the board. We created this regulation where you delegate all of that to somebody else. So you've done your job when you sign that resolution. Then your accountant or library director, attorneys and other people actually pay responsibility to you. Beautiful role you were, your function. Um, so with that.
One more question.
Yeah.
Um, so our fiscal year is January to December, by the way. Yes. So when you say at the beginning of each year, we're on stuff, we need January, not May, since we're getting.
Correct. Yeah, we'll have a little more discussion about that too, because you're going to talk the budget to me. For nearly you will talk that like this. We'll explain to you why we have to do it. Um, so we're ready to have the elections. Any, any of you can make a motion to, uh, elect a president or a vice president or a secretary or a treasurer. Or you can list all three and plan a motion, whatever you choose to do.
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate. Unless anybody else has.
Yeah, I have an interest in.
Oh.
So nominate myself.
And I guess I think it would be helpful to see. People that's interested in. To do. Decisions. I certainly don't. Here. Of transition. But how else to be specific, just by any. Well, when people make that decision, we're getting to this position. It, it's either self nominate or to be known. Well, yeah, my thought was just ask people.
I'm going to defer, given that I have a five-year term, I'm going to defer. Certain positions this year, I think. See how that is out and what makes more sense as time passes.
I'd also like to differ on all positions we share, uh, but not that I wouldn't do one. I just. I just, uh. We're all super qualified to do any of them. Like I don't know if I have all the time in the world to set together all the schedule. That kind of stuff. So that would mind me to answer.
I don't have any, I mean, I'm happy to lend a hand wherever I can. I do have a fairly individual, um, journey. I often travel. So I mean, as long as nothing isn't required to be in person regularly, I can probably juggle. Now, I certainly don't think I'm interested in president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. Those are actually played in my string.
A question about whether or not we can meet. Because it's considered a meeting, we are not all present physically.
Yeah.
Can we still have, can we have Zoom meetings? Okay. Okay.
We never miss.
I, I just. Sure.
Oh, yeah, same to the.
And, and myself.
Yeah. Yeah, the, I, I, I mean, I would do the secretary, treasurer thing, but I'm not. See how it shakes up.
Yeah, so I've given it thought and I, um, I too have a five-year term, but life's too short and you never know, right? So I'm of the philosophy of stepping in when I know it's right, you know, the time and availability is now. And, um, just finished a big term on hospital board and, um, you know, so have time and flexibility and trust. I'm very passionate about the governance side of this.
Sam, can I ask if the two of you, if, since there can, we're going to pick one president. Would either of you be interested in the vice president's role? Should you not be chosen as president?
Um, I suppose I could do either one. I mean, I'm guessing if we put this like commission, vice president, president, the director. Junior staff meetings and this kinds of things set up the agenda. Um, I'm only a one-year term, so. You know, serving as president this year and then meeting with vice president. Could make sense, but.
Sure. And I have the, no, Chris. Right now we have a motion trustee Hamilton on the table to appoint Johnny Teeter as president. Just maybe heard acceptance of the vice president and I think I heard, uh. Secretary treasurer as well. Um.
Look, I, I know we need to make one of, I mean, I, he did express interest in motion.
Yeah, I did. Like it's, it's such a weird process, isn't it?
Yeah, it will always take a turn.
Yeah, but he is the first motion.
So.
Do these motions require a second? Yes, yes. Yeah. So I'm just asking if, if, uh, Doug wants to amend his motion to. Slate.
I, I would like to, I could amend my motion if Nita would be acceptable to, to add motion if you vice president and Sylvia as secretary. That be acceptable or, um. That, you know. Do you or would you like us to vote on? On.
Sure. No, it's fine.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
So currently, I'm a secretary, treasurer.
Secretary director. So, um, the motion would be for Johnny as president. Nita, um, as vice president and, um, Leah as secretary slash treasurer.
Secretary. Uh, any further discussion?
My thing is that these three are going to be secretaries. So, um, but I'm going to help you guys, anybody I can. You can always get with me and. The, you know, um, same with you, Anita, because, um, but that's my only thing. Thank you for volunteering.
With discretion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks.
If you can, it's done.
I, I do have a question. Um, on the terms, our terms, do they go. Tonight to the fourth, fourteenth of May, two thousand. You know, start over at the beginning of here. So they'll be, they'll be weirdly off cycle from, that's probably better because. You know, to get the, the council and the county commissioners to do anything between December and. January, right? They give lots of time. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you, you don't fall into the regular.
Okay, thank you.
I would know that our secretary and treasurer is on. But it's not required, I'd say.
Yeah, I have additional questions. Include us from electing officers who were to roll off the January. Following Jan. So. So Johnny's only going to serve for actually seven months or so.
No.
You know.
Certain minutes.
It may.
Oh.
Definitely have the annual.
But we.
Annual recertification in January.
Oh, okay.
But not the officers. It's like a bunch of.
So I'm sure you said. I see. Okay, okay. Sorry. I interrupted you. You're kind of starting to start. I get confused about. Sorry. You're right.
Again, in your Bible, if you do those, if you choose to change the schedule for the officers. So that it happens in January along with that end of the straight resolution.
Yeah.
You could.
Okay.
But there's a lot in that.
Okay.
The first, the first year, the show you read it all. So. Um, item number six on the agenda is a presentation by David Plonin. This in here because a lot of the things are. Next year or two. Pursued in the library, the city library. And David's. Those things are now. I know what the legal things are, but he was with the fact. So, um, he was inserted in the agenda here because even some of the. But David.
Congratulations for all and welcome to the library district. It's been awesome. Um, and I'm sure it comes as no surprise. So as, as have some of you, uh, this project has been one term, uh, one. I think we first began discussing in anticipation. Not shock, we were at.
Charity.
Yeah, charity. So it'll come as no surprise, um, that, you know. So I suppose, I'm sure, I thought about this for a while. And so like, um, there are many, you know, hundred-page documents that describe district transitions. Um, there are other shorter documents. Multiple times. So there is kind of a chart and Doug, to your point, you're all going to be. First year, um, the first three months, you know, I, I set out a timeline based on some of the milestones you have to hit. And look at that. I think like, oh my gosh, it's drinking, it's literally drinking fire hose. And, um, the difficulty may come about in like, where's the water coming? Because if you're, you hit all the milestones, you are going to have to get a lot of information. And the legal part is one, uh, important, very. But there are so many intersecting parts from the way to, uh, actually making transitions. There's no dates of the transition yet. Um, obviously, uh, there's going to be a need, your, your roles to be defined. There are people who are ready to do that from the state library to come in and help you out and those kind of things. But for some of them, uh, it's going to require some knowledge of library, library. And for that, you'll need some staff who can really get into that tonight because you will have to make some, uh, concerted effort. Entity to, uh, enter some form of agreement with the city, uh, in order to ensure that those, that library staff, current library staff. Can do work, uh, in both of those areas when that work begins, what that looks like, how limited they are in doing it. But it's not just the library staff. Because of us being a city department, there are a lot of different city departments who are involved and will be involved in this transition. And maybe, uh, some, again, some of those milestones have to be ticked off in order for the city, uh, to begin to work towards that transition. I can say, I mean, I've heard Maria was here earlier to review all, but had to go to another meeting. Um, and Chris has been on this project in these last three years. Um, you know, the city is committed in various, we are committed to a smooth and efficient and, uh, timely transition as is possible. There's a lot of room in that as is possible for negotiations and that kind of thing, but the city's commitment is really to a smooth and, and, uh, efficient transaction. So that there's no interruption service, um, that the transition is effective for the public and for the staff who work here. Um, just know that we have, um, you know, we. Have documents and I, I do, I do a spreadsheet every day. I, I have sheets lined up for like where are those intersections? Obviously, a whole lot of things that you guys have to do. Some of those, uh, don't have median base to be determined, but some things do. I think we're going to get to a point where there, a transition occurs. Maybe within eight months, maybe within twelve, maybe within two years. Uh, it is important. And our minds and the library staff. That after the election, the, the hope is that we can show the public like what you're sending. And I, I realize that you have so much work to do, but in our minds and the work that we do now with the city and future of the district. Um, our whole focus is really on. On how we serve the public and how to show them the impact of, for the money that they're investing in. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about anything. Um, yes, Sylvia.
Um, I'm just curious. So you were mentioning the spreadsheets. Are, are those like, like, is there like a roadmap with like, you have like. Milestone dates that we've been hit, like with particular tasks or have you thought it like that?
I, but that's ultimately, ultimately that's your, you, your decision. I mean, I crafted multiple ones over the years of like how we make this transition. And so. Yeah, I mean, you could think of it kind of like a Gantt chart and there's, there, there are multiple levels to the work that we're asked to do. And I, I, I sometimes stop and think like, oh my God, how are we going to do it all? But at the same time, beneath that, there is an entire organization and an entity which involves not just library staff, but the city who. People make all this thing function. And so there's a lot of work that they have to go to in order for there not to be unnecessary delays at any point. That we say like, oh God, we're going to need another eight months to do this project simply because of X. And so that's what we don't want to happen. So many of these things have to go in tandem. Um, there are several milestones. The budget, Kim already mentioned, that is a huge one. You have to approve the budget. For, for twenty twenty. That, I think the deadline is December tenth. Most library districts do it in October. October, November. And there will be some critical elements to the I G A, which we will enter negotiations in relatively soon. Um, critical elements of that, that are imperative that you answer. Context is that much. For you, you're not going to be able to put together. Recently understood budget. We can always amend the budget later. You can. In order to have a concrete budget, which I think people can understand. There are some parts of the I G A that can. Certainly in, in the ninety to a hundred and twenty, fifty, fifty days. I can follow up on this question. I think to the extent that the timeline or the chart would be lovely to share that. And that leads me to the kind of awkward question that I think Eric has to do as well, Chris.
Yeah.
You know, today we are here, suffering by the city, which is great. We can't really forward in any meaningful way without. Support from library staff and support from city staff as we bring our own staff. Um, we talked about the I G A as one thing. It seems to me like it would be some sort of preliminary agreement with the city. That we have access to people who.
with the city that we have access to people who report to us, or report to us through the library director. You know, with the understanding that we reimburse you before we get into IGA, employees in the IGA seems like it's long term. I know, Chris, Tim, Kim, I think you can think about this too, but does anyone have any thoughts on how to best make this happen? You know, it's as simple as organizing, like, we have our staff. You should do that.
No.
Yeah, I, I, we've thought about it a lot, and I know Kim has had experience with other organizations, so. I'll, I'll throw out some thoughts, and then Kim, maybe I'll pass it to you, and see if you have other thoughts to add. Um, uh, I think there's, there's a couple of things, one is, one of your, um, responsibilities is to hire life. And it's up to you to decide when you wanna do. Um, but, uh, one of the items on your agenda today is to at least talk about legal counsel. Um, that'll at least give you some administrative support, uh, but then you'll need to make a decision on when you. In the meantime, as you're kind of forming, we're, you know, we're here to get you up and get you going, and then once you're, you, you kind of have the, the stability, uh, then as a body, you'll be able to kind of go off and. Um, and then, you, you know, there's a couple of different ways that, in the, the models that we've seen of other cities that have transitioned to library districts, how they've done. Some have done kind of interim IGA, uh, like Fort Collins, I think, was one that did this, where they, they did a really short, quick IGA that basically said like, city, we got it, we're gonna keep running the library, and we're gonna do it with the budget that we approved, and we're not gonna make any big changes. Um, and don't worry, we've got it while you are building your capacity to be able to take on. Um, and so, if, uh, we've kind of said that verbally, I know Nurya, her letter to you essentially said that, and I'll reinforce that, like, don't worry. We, we've got the library for you until you're ready to, to fully transition and take over. Um, uh, but we could do that interim IGA that could define some of that. Part of what we have to just be careful about is conflict of interest. Um, es- essentially, the, and lawyers in the room can correct me if I get this wrong, please, it's such, uh. I think there are more lawyers in this room than not. Um, is, the city has a conflict of interest, uh, uh, it's defined in City Code. And part of that is it also defines, um, wh- what you, how you can act from your prior employment. You first get hired by the city, um, and also what you can do after, uh, you finish your employment at the city. Some of that also includes essentially the, the kind of area that you can't engage on anything you were just working on at the city. And so, we have to be very careful about conflict of interest, it's part of, in kind of the notes to all of you, why David has not been in those communications, uh, because we don't wanna create any kind of conflict of interest, so we wanna be thoughtful and careful about that. We have thought somehow to kind of make that smooth, depending on, on what you all wanna do, um, but that is, uh, that's something we just have to be thoughtful, especially with library staff, um, because they essentially can't work two governments at the same time. Um, so we just have to figure out what that definition is. Once the IGA is complete, we've got a really kind of clear roadmap, then it's just a whole bunch of staff that are gonna do a whole lot of work. Frankly, you're probably gonna have a whole bunch of consultants doing much, too. Um, so, once we get through the IGA, um, the road gets a little smoother from my perspective.
So, what you say, the interim IGA?
Uh, probably the full IGA, um, is what really will define, like, how we're gonna transition, and my team, and, you know, all the people, the stuff, the, the, the assets.
For the interim staff or IGA or something like that, is it possible that they could stay, um, on the city benefits? Or, and, and paid by the city and then reimbursed, um, with the understanding that, 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 um, they're now technically, you know, well, defacto, uh, district employees, is that something that, that's happened before? I don't know if you were.
Yeah, well, so, so typically, you know, what we've been told, that, you know, that first IGA, interim IGA, we take on that around. It's pretty simple, it doesn't address a ton, but it addresses the fact that, one, the city will operate it.
Okay.
In accordance with its budget. Two, you guys are now a taxing entity that you will reimburse us in some point in the future of our spending. And then, three, that all of the employees, this, I'm just kind of reciting it for a comp, it's not here. But that all of the city employees that worked for the library, tend to be city employees, and they get city benefits and city. That, you know, all of the things that they, you know, pay the pay kids as city employees and all of that. Then when you move into the, um, you know, the final, hopefully, close to final IGA, um, you know, then the actual details of like, how you're gonna move these one hundred employees.
Yeah, yeah.
All, all of those types of things will be forgotten.
I think first, to your question, it was that district, which you have, um, section checking. Yeah. Actually, work relationships. One or two year contract, consulting contract, a job to two.
Right.
And those people could then later transition to a district. Unless the infrastructure is built down such to accept it. Right now, there is no infrastructure, and that is a start of time, right? The city. Exactly the same or not, it's a decision you have to make, right? So, um, but the ability to bring in contract. Solutions that help to build it. Just to be able to accept transition. So you would not be. Just. And for clarity, so the city, the city's written, district's written, I return it as a contract. I'm not an employee, I certainly would, would, you know. You're not signing. Right.
So, so one further follow-up, one I've been hoping that has helped, personally, that's a great direction for us to go. My warrior team is kicking. Because in doing, A, we are dependent, the city of the state of the information of things. And so having clarity about how we can communicate. And who is helpful, um, Nurya sent out the note saying, for now, everything goes through Nurya, which I assume is you. Because that's mine, I mean, it's library commissioners, they always have everything through David. I think my experience, um, as you go down the chain, there's often reluctance to get direct information from the staff. Whether in this kind of condition, we can, we really need information, so if you guys could put some thought into what we're doing, what the communication procedures are, and the procedures on how we get the information we need about, you know, how much it really costs to run the library. I think those kinds of things have been very helpful in literature, when you do this with a G. Um, I just don't want us to get caught in this kind of too fast algorithm, we have to have the IGA, or get the information to. So that may take some thought, and I'm sure you guys have gone to this before, that's kind of, I think, is how we do the question.
And, and if it's okay for me to chime in, we, we've thought about that too, and then, you, you're getting ready to kind of take over and be the governing body of an entity that you know a lot about. Um, and some of you probably know more than, than others, or know pieces of their parts, so. Um, we've spent some time sitting down and thinking about, what are all those things that you might wanna know? Kind of made a brainstorm of it, and then we thought, okay, well, let's gather all that and realize like, we need this giant binder of information that may or may not actually be interesting and helpful to you. So our thought is, why don't we start, like, we'll give you the big giant list, and then tell us what you're interested in, and we'll get you the expert to get you the information. Um, uh, so that you have that, whatever you. So that's, that's something that, that we're happy to.
Did you think about like briefing sessions about the body of knowledge that you gathered in a binder?
We did, we thought about that, and so, if there are certain things, like if you really want somebody to dig in on finances, like, and you wanna have one of your meetings be kind of briefing on some of how the finances currently work, we're happy to bring people to your meeting at your request, and your, library finances, or whatever topic you might be interested, happy to convey all of the, the information.
So one of the things that's on our agenda today was just to talk about how we recognize ourselves, to leave. Douglas proposed that we could. Six hundred workshop or something, there's been discussion of setting up something that is. We, I think a whole of these speaks together. Um, I think it would be important for us to know which of us, you know, who wants everything, you know. So getting that. With this, I think. Focus, even to work out a Gantt chart, and then generate. If we can establish a relationship that says we're gonna have open communication, to the extent possible, and share it. Take that, and benefit all of us, and then we as board, we can, you know, we sit, plowing through, skin and pace.
More of a question I had related to the, uh, Lordy, like, who, if we did the interim piece, um, could that just be signed by the city manager? Does that have to go to council or a poll vote, or? Who, um, who, maybe to, okay, yeah, council.
But on the council, that's a question too. Chalks, why do you need our help? Can we, certain things, it's really, it's really, this is.
And I think that the, it hurts in the county, you know, they're not capable right now, so, um, I, I think that they're anticipating having some.
Hopefully, send agenda items to the council to approve, or, or something like an interim type thing, I guess they could always bring it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, the council's proof is, it's a standard practice to bring these types of things.
Got it, got it.
Very kind of standard operating.
Thanks, sir, I just wonder, I just, I wasn't sure, and so.
Do you think you're gonna chime in?
It's sound, it'd be great to second, and we've covered a lot of them.
I, I do, I, I, I do wanna talk about the workshop and what we. I'll get it some later, but we have that on, you know.
Um, I think you covered most of the, well, you didn't cover most of it, and you're gonna have to deal with it, but, um, just setting up that communications process, and including various lists that have been created, you'll see those in the IGA, it's. So, you're gonna do a service kind of a framework for figuring out, but interim IGA, what information we need. They will, actually come together. Um, David, I think, mentioned Collins, we did do the interim IGA at the beginning. And we went for this day, around since two thousand and five, they, they are still working together during the day, because, you know, we're in a scale resources, which they aren't doing that anymore, but, but, uh, procurement and much of other different areas. So, you may end up there to do it with the city, please. Get a common term, interim IGA.
And I assume that we're confident, like, we have a top candidate.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That means that interim IGA. Yeah, see what it actually says. The president, really nice guy, this wasn't good, no.
Yeah.
No, it really helps with this. Tooter, it's called Tooter now.
Right, right.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, heard of him, just his name.
So then I have one other question, follow-up, to, to question, and, um, you know, who would say it's important purposes on public, should promise to the, um, situation here. Many of the things, most things that are master plan goals, and, um, things that need to take some months to do. But restoring libraries is something that should be simple, if you have staff to do that with enough flexibility. So if, you know, if, if we said, city will, through more budgets for this, could get help, so do you need to hire staff to do that?
We would need to hire additional staff, and there is, uh, you know, that is something that, so most of that information can have. So, budget of the city chair, we won't be seeing very dramatic changes this year's. Last year, so, we can bring all that information to you, show you the cost of it, part of it again, I think, is realization that, you will have to work through the city in order for them, and then, then, then the question becomes, uh, because you're asking the city basically to bring on more staff. To take the transition, at some unknown date, you know, maybe, maybe six months, ten years. So that would be, that would be something you have to come to some agreement, I think, probably in person. In those discussions.
Good evening, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes, please complete your library business and exit the building, thank you.
I don't know, Jess, I would be thankful to see you around, in fifteen minutes. Por favor, conclude your subactividades en la primera hora y salga del edificio. Gracias.
All of these are master. Of course, the, the, the. There's also. I think one, this was, oh, about your one term. The amount of money. But, but there is a lot, that's why I say the first three months, you're really drinking. The next three months, you're probably drinking. Which hopefully you're, that's where, that's, so the short answer to my question is.
Well, I think we need financial, I think we need financial to, like, that kind of, you know, to figure out if we can do that.
You know, I, you know, I'm wildly hopeful that, yeah, that all of those things could happen, but it requires the agreement, um, you know, the city as well as, yeah, for the trustees as a part.
If we have to hire staff during the transition, and that just complicates things. So that's all I was really interested in, is whether you could have a new staff, you know, it was simply a matter of getting the money to do it, to get to our staff.
No, it would be.
So, thank you.
One of the things that I'm trying to add after, with that little discussion, you're gonna see that, turns of this IGA, there are lots of ways to accomplish each of these things. So, at some point, you're gonna have to go down with this, which way you're gonna deliver. I was just listening to that conversation, having employees to the city library, or you could hire your employees and keep them in the city. Other than having the city hire more employees, you're gonna transition later, because there's a lot of, in the box. That for the city especially, in transition. Um, lots of, every one of these areas, lots of discussion, negotiations about how to make that. I think, probably there are only three that's gonna happen, it's just a matter of, or a matter of how you do. Um, if that's good enough on that discussion, we can move on to these administrative matters. Um, most of these items relate to what I had said earlier on, about you having to do your business in. Um, in order to do that, you have to, basically, you have a time, you have to have a place where we post notices. Uh, so these administrative organizational matters go to that. So, first of all, we need to designate a newspaper for publication of district legal notices. That would include things like, um, elections, your budget, you have to have a budget hearing. Each of those has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation. Eventually, that's gonna change the, the website, but now it's a newspaper of general circulation. We have to choose that, and the city has a third paper that uses.
We use the daily camera.
You can use the number post. In that.
I don't know what else you have.
I think that's it.
I see one of their choices.
No, it's a shishan bowl, it was.
I mean, I guess the thing owner saw that they're not really totally district, so. I don't. Do you make a motion or?
Current, all current city notices are in.
And Chris, you'll be continuing to do services for us to totally transition?
I think that if you, if you engage legal counsel, at least for, until you, you know, at some point, uh, and I think even for this notice, I think actually it was Kim's firm took care of that notice, so we're, we kind of said, who wants to do it? We both knew how to do it, so, um, if you've got a legal counsel, they can help you that way.
Great, do you, do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, let's do, let's do any push-in, listen to that.
To select daily camera as our newspaper record?
Second.
Discussion. They were say aye. I need to designate a four hundred visit location, once you have a website, you use.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Buenas noches, la biblioteca se cerrará en diez minutos. Por favor concluyas sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
Who needs a site? Posting. Oh, twenty first.
Oh, not like a question, it's on the third, it was twenty, all the time and, and.
Yeah, there's a score back on the left top.
We will need.
And I propose maybe even a standard, something different than on the side there, you know, that we just draw attention to the fact that, you know, it's the library district and so. I'd like to make a motion that we designate, um, main library entrance location as the physical location for district. Second. A second, and like, you know, should we have some? So my interview, I suggested it be like on an easel or something that's just, you know, because it is temporary, right, it's time to draw attention and right next to the short, short story reading. Kiosk.
Any further discussion? Favor?
I, I.
Uh, website creation, there are companies, every year the legislature because of all the issue of the special difference, but you are not, you are not. Um, legislature of this, this very problems and making. Ways of disclosing, thank you. So we're now, we're, until you have a website, you don't, at least physical location. City has a website, you need it. Uh, I don't know if the city library, the page on library site, or I think you're in the exhibition game. And so rather than hiring some, yeah, the.
Oh, um, do we need a, David, we need a secure domain, domain date?
Well, so this is kind of putting out a similar.
Yeah, so we have older libraries that work. Oh, you already have it.
That we, we, but it means. It's a, it's a, it's kind of a. It's kind of, it's not the actual webpage, it's a alias, but we've owned that since two thousand, two thousand seven. So, my preference would be that we initially consider subdivision of that page for the district as a sub-page, library as a page. So I think the conditions. But without giving up, then.
Do you have a dumb question? So for right now, beyond something like.
What would be the web, what would the website be for right now?
Well, for, in those two meetings and.
Okay, so we know this, so we.
It's quite nature, it's like.
So what about, um, email address related to that?
So, again, we can set up a, a reputation that can, that you also do change with your news, which is only.
You can create a group.
Yeah, actually, well, like creating you an email account at the library. Very quickly, I learned, that's essentially how you would get, get access to the text. Uh, and so can't go there yet. Uh, it'd be a vision that we would transition to their library dot org if you wanted it. Be a part of the transition and an asset of the district. But until the transition is completed, you've got to. Can't provide.
I think that sounds like a good solution.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Buenas noches, la biblioteca se cerrará en cinco minutos. Por favor concluyas sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
I really do think, uh, email address that needs everybody with, you know, one, a name or not a Gmail account would be heard, trustees in the district. Because I do not want another Gmail account. So for now, I'll tolerate it, it's going to happen, but.
It could be.
I'd like to set up your name and then put the.
I just put a dot.
I'm gonna mimic that, I didn't say, yeah, and I just gonna share it.
But yeah, it's, but it's a pain to have.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
I think when I looked at Tooter River, that's me, uh, we said Tooter Valley, Tooter River District, it's the same thing, they have like trustees at whatever, and then they go, I must go to everyone at the count, at the trustee or.
Yeah.
And then they were replying from individual accounts.
So we, we have, so I, so I, I don't, I think, I think we can set up an ask.
Okay, yes, yeah.
A distribution list that then goes to your team. You won't actually have access to that. Have to sit, check and see, I think we can probably set up access as trustees at library.
Right.
Uh, that then is the, there'd be a distribution list through which you could get.
We, Chris, you're using themselves as to how.
Right.
Whoever's meeting, team, just one, discussing, you, you, but you didn't want to.
So what's, so we can discuss that.
But what's the decision on the?
Well, I'm gonna propose, I'm gonna move that the city provide web age for us, see the city's light money side as a true solution for.
Yes.
Can we review, look at, as trustee to see the page for the slide? So.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
There's a.
And who just works here? Uh, are you looking at?
Sorry, you for the decision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next item is, again, meeting, those open meeting requirements, we have to designate regular meeting times, locations, dates. Um, I would suggest to, there are regular meetings. Special meetings. There no. I think the only thing they, they are still. Still thing. The only thing to try to do per session, there's.
Um, so the regular meeting that we would designate today, would that be like after everything settles down and that would be our regular meeting going forward? When, you know, when everything is set up and starting to meet on, on a regular time? And then my follow-up question is, so all of the meetings we're gonna have to have, you know, once we get out of the gate here, are those special meetings? So are those work session?
They're only special because they're not regular. And so, and that you can schedule your, say, we're gonna meet regularly on whatever Tuesday the citizens meet on. Then if you want that, the next meeting, you can change that, you're scheduled, but we have to post regular meetings scheduled. Then beyond that, every meeting, you can change the next regular meeting, you can schedule a special meeting, you can, you can something of a session. You're all.
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today and we look forward to seeing you again.
Your question, last one. Atención, la biblioteca está cerrada. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy y esperamos verlos nuevamente.
Special meetings.
I have a sense of, of, to know that that is right, right now. Uh, things are mostly settled future, uh, we're gonna get upstanding. Sense, but. I just don't, I have a good sense of.
Can, can you probably give us inside of library districts, should library districts still be selling, still to?
Um, they generally will just schedule. Regular meeting, but then. This meeting. And as long as you're doing, then. And we could call it regular, a special.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
And then you can choose a name. You can name boats and carry motion.
Yeah, but what we wanna see is on the website, this is the, so. Since third Tuesday, I mean, at this place, at this. Unless we say otherwise, you know, the previous meeting, and then the other meetings, this. Yeah, so the wording is maybe question, expectations, and.
Yeah, there are people who are watching the business, expectations, they.
But I would say, I think, so. Um, with, maybe, maybe for a regular meeting at the body, we schedule like, I realize the schedule like one month, they put up a second Tuesday of the month. Um, from six to eight, you know, right, and then, what I should also say is maybe we need special sessions. And I would hope that we maybe do those like force it, I don't know what people's schedules look like, so that we're not like meeting late at night every, um, it started turning into a punk unit, like in a month or something, so. Um, uh. Nine o'clock, do you know what I mean? So I, my thing is like, maybe, maybe first let's decide on a regular meeting time, date, and then talk about special meetings we're gonna have to do to get spun up, but we wanna take a break. Okay, you guys are good. Okay, um, so you guys wanna, does anybody have any preference for our regular meeting time at the body?
Oh, it seemed like we mostly came together on Tuesdays, that's. Okay, me, and I would advocate for the special meetings being also the same time slots of it, you could, you just block that out.
Yeah. As much as possible.
Yeah, I mean, that's, personally, I think this time slot is maybe the best one.
Okay, so you guys all like?
It's hard to make, it would be hard, it'd be hard to get there sooner.
Okay, Tuesday, maybe like, yep, which day?
So third, third Tuesday.
So like, third Tuesday of the month from six to eight, the regular meeting hours?
Yep.
Well, I'm asking. So.
Sounds fine.
So I'll make a motion that a regular meeting of the Boulder Library District will be held third Tuesday of every month from six, eight, yeah. Probably at the Boulder Main Library. Uh, in this room.
And presumably with the option to attend virtually.
Correct, yeah.
Do we have an understanding or that we provide a special meeting Friday at the same Tuesday time?
We'll take that as the next, yeah, yeah.
Uh, second.
Hey. Um, brothers, discussion? Favor say aye?
Aye, aye, it was in the calendar, so can't do that now. So I'm gonna move, just to try and do things along, you know, the special meetings to have an expectation, you know, before one be scheduled on Tuesdays, on Saturdays. So that makes out some.
Yeah, I mean, so you guys wanna, you both wanna commit now to do the nights? And, you know, let's say for the next, I mean, not everyone has to come to every meeting or do come virtually. Uh, I doubt they'll probably buy us dinner every, but uh.
You know what? I don't.
Um, um, anyway, so anyone have any discussion about that or six to eight, I think.
I just put it in my calendar.
Okay, weekly from six days, so.
There's some time when I don't need to be here, it's self-committee choosing that time or something.
Yeah. So.
Second.
I'll see, but do you wanna say in, in an item or do you wanna say?
Just wanna say, just. I'm staying, duration can change it.
Okay, so, oh, we're gonna hold special meeting weekly, the motions are, that special meeting weekly, you say from Friday.
We can say as necessary.
As necessary, for instance.
As a necessary.
Right, I was just saying, I'm meeting next Tuesday. Yeah. Sounds like it's, I'm bringing a special meeting. Side of the.
Yeah. So, so this might be a time of point to ask the question about the library, which is still in existence and still. It seems like a good sense. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Drop we can, you know.
That was good. You're interested? That was the guy.
So that's, so you, you basically set aside every Tuesday, six to eight, for special meetings, but you haven't set it's personal, yeah.
No, I think we're gonna be next Tuesday.
I'm gonna move every set of special next Tuesday, twenty thirty.
Yeah.
Yes. So do we have to make a motion every time, if we make a motion every time we have scheduling a special meeting? Is that correct, Jim? Okay.
Yeah, but and eventually.
Okay, no, I just, I'm.
And do it by acclamation, but for a while, let's do this.
Okay.
So the motion is made twenty third, six to eight, here?
Here. Then one final. Oh.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
So that will go up on the website and it will be posted, or the bird will be posted, waiting out on there in the screen.
Now, one final meeting, special meeting, is this planning thing? Um. Maybe on a Saturday or Sunday or Friday afternoon. Uh, I can see how it works, um.
I'm sure, what's the planning thing?
Well, this, um, it's a sort of, is there another part of the agenda for that or? Oh, okay, this, it, this is what I'm proposing, you know, it's basically just a working session where I think would be great that we could David could present the scan chart to us. We could break up into, we could designate responsible people. Um, and work teams and like if, if, you know, there's a team that wants to negotiate the I G A, like, you know, and whoever else, then we should be present just in that. And these are the questions and that, that we could kind of designate that during the work session. So that we can probably knock out sort of. A plan of action to and maybe even agree on like. A timeline for when we wanna make the transition, because it'd be nice to like, you know, as a group. Look at the Gantt chart and say, hey. Not binding, but we have a goal for, you know, transitioning January thirty first or September thirty first or whatever. And it'd be nice to, as a group, to look at, take time to sit down and assign assignments and.
De- David, how much time do you think we'll need to look at your prioritized roadmap? Look at the work streams and understand that. Like, do we need twelve hours to, and you do, you know?
Roles and responsibilities. There are so many things that, you know, the wrapping your heads around the cost is. As well as the master. So, yeah, you know, the trustees have a lot of. Except insofar as. You know, all of them have a dollar. So there's a, there's a component there where you have to kind of wrap your head around. And then in the end, there are many things to do, whether you decide subcommittees or. All of you want to approach everything, you have to establish some items right now. And you can use your attorney for helping. Or. And you also begin, you need to be prepared to enter into changing changes. And that's not just me. So I think what Doug is proposing, it's not in the steering. Really, maybe not very. There are lots of things. Over the next two, charge of work. And think that no data from Chris have the tools to that. Kill the cases. And so I think your question is, is six hours reasonable for a job to do? That sort of thing is four hours reasonable to go through? Here's the pieces of the ONGA, here's the pieces you need to do the budget, so the pieces. They have my laws to do this to really actually in charge. If you remember the study session we did at Hatch and. When like most of the time it's kind of.
So. Yeah, and I would defer to. Benita, you and Sylvia on and David on the agenda for that day, you know. I just, just think we need, in my view, we need probably a concerted amount of time just to. To start sticking names next to task.
What I hear, what I hear David saying is like, we have the business of learning to become trustees to do before we even. Do like look at his prioritized roadmap and say, okay, so and so is gonna work on the negotiation, so and so is gonna work on employee engagement, so and so is gonna work on property transfer. I think he's saying like, you need to learn how to be a trustee.
You just like.
Yeah.
I think. If six hours is what you can stand, then six hours would be.
And I think to follow gentleman, but I hear you say is what we go to the state library and can't do. So that might be a session. And how much time the state library taking there would need to argue? They they do all kinds of shifts, so that begin. They do an hour cap. It's a, it's yours.
But does that have to be a meeting?
Yeah, that would be a.
Oh, the meeting, okay. Yeah, okay. But yeah.
Together.
But if we don't talk, we just listen, I.
If we are.
If you don't touch, you think you could not talk? Ninety minutes.
He's already gonna be so.
So I think it would be a, in a, I don't know, per session, separate trauma session.
Yeah.
It sounds like either you or the state library, the district, or Tuesday.
Yeah.
If we wish, and I I'm not the way. Whether how to do that, I have obviously time. So, I mean, those are two people looking for us to.
So Saturdays and Sundays, like, first week of June. What is like, or or ill day weekend, I'm sure if all one gets together.
Ask where the house is for the, uh, the monthly hour session.
Yes. You think that's too early, David? Or should we structure a library?
I just started studying.
No, I think he's still on the work plan.
We're like.
So you choose.
So so just we got people competing.
Yeah.
So let's, let's separate.
Yeah, okay.
Let's talk about the how to be a library trustee, which is state or thing. Track.
Right.
And those really.
Ah, okay.
Get our heads into. So let's talk about next thing now, because it sounds like you could want to, you could get a state. Tuesday night. For example, next Tuesday night. Is that too soon, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's, let's.
Well, I guess what I was asking is if the planning meeting. The one, it's not the how to be a trustee piece, but the planning meeting. If we did that in early June, but that'd be too early, it would be not that stuff. Or.
Yeah, and it's how you want to, my, my, my preferred approach would be have a. You don't enter into a meeting and you have to like officers and agents, so you, you have some knowledge about some of the assignments.
Okay.
So I think. Four weeks from today. At least if you meet, you will have gotten the grasp, kind of like you did, you know, back. Of a number of the basic kind of tracks you can have. Subcommittee choose to have, and then you'll know which. Subcommittee you may wanna get on, because. And again, I don't know if you all wanna read everything, I know Johnny. But you know, there are a lot of different tracks that you will be working, some legal, staffing issues, some. Finance, contracts.
Yeah.
They're all equally important, and 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 they, they, so I don't, I can grasp them all in a matter of two months. You'll have enough to make decisions.
My only problem is. For weekends in the summer. Like, starting about the seventeenth. But to like, well, it'll be hard, you know, in middle of July, but.
So, so can we do a check-in on what people think about getting gathered on Saturday or Sunday? Session first.
I can't do the third or the tenth. So.
I just can't either. Generally, I think it's good. And I think, I mean, I also think, I mean, personally, I could take like a half day or a day. Session, I couldn't do that regularly, but I. You know, it kind of ticked off.
Uh, I'm, I'm up for it. I available. So I heard third, tenth. Go down to seventeen. I wonder if we could add two or three hours to the, a Tuesday meeting? In, you know, and sort of. Make work arrangement, I don't know if people could do that and make that a longer session, right, or four to ten.
Yeah, yeah, that, we could try and do that, yeah.
Something like, it, it just feels like quite feasible, given that you've locked down that two hour.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm with you, I think you guys are great, but like, we're getting seven people, we can schedule.
No, I don't. I didn't know if you were gonna do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think we can try that, given the interest of scheduling. I think weekends. I, I tend to get fatigued at, you know, three or four hour mark, but to be honest.
Yeah, I know you do.
That's.
Sure, yeah.
I know we're. May be, um, but, but I think, you know, it's not that big of a deal, so, you know, we can give that a try.
We might as well just go.
That's right.
So maybe, maybe we. Maybe we do that, we don't have to schedule it now, but we look for one of like the two, Tuesdays, June, do a longer session? And like tax some time on the front and back end, about six to eight, if you do. You know, four to eight or nine to five, yeah.
And then, Benita, maybe you and I can sit down with David and Chris, uh, if you're ever ready, we can think about the agendas for the next. Few weeks and how we walk through those and decide when to start. Your session.
Yeah, and I do wanna second David, but I think we need to give meetings the formal respect.
Yeah. Yeah.
Super long.
And we'll enable that.
So the work item here is for us to, our expectation is just to somehow, we're going to be. Meeting, we're going to have to have regular six. And we get with June based on extending some of those to a longer session. We're to accommodate this. And we get, we were staying to figure out the agenda sequencing. So maybe at the end of this, we can sit down and we can find this together. So now let's talk about state. Attention. Probably suggest that we ask David to talk to the state library, find out from them, then just assume straight we can come in. And why it was on Tuesday since your meet, I've worked with the previous vision. Sure. Anyone has, what were the questions about this session, but service those. We have something particularly. You participated.
If you need me, I'll, I'll fit in.
Okay, I need to tell it to. And I think we probably don't. So now my question about the library commission. They are still new, why is it? Seems to really make sense to have the right commissioners who are not on this board join us for moving. Was to share the vision. I don't know if that makes sense in cities. Such an opposition, because they have this commission that's in existence, but doesn't really have. Authority, if they're doing policy, they're obviously. So we've got to stop it. It's really curious, we, we talk. We had quite a lot of. Criticships. We do have a policy coming up, which. And so that on the first week of July. So they need to exist for at least a longer. After that, I ended up pretty light. There's a budget season, which we. Uh, whether that's necessary or not, I think that's the commission side, they advise council and. They have to decide. You know, I, I don't wanna waste their time.
Yeah.
But we also have, we don't have.
Yeah, but it might make sense at some point. Later on, like, I don't know, maybe it is July or August, when we have a sense of working groups and, you know. Structure or a need there, like, you know, I think the other commissioners would be very interested in being on those groups, and so that would be, they engage. Commission. Like, it's a gesture.
And so now, I didn't, that's something that would be best for. So. People who are not members of the trust teams can participate in some.
Yeah. But it would be beyond just the commissioner, right?
Yeah, it's also right, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, and. Okay.
Great, thank you.
That's fine.
Four. The next, we. Who can ask the kind of, I'm sure you will, put together what to kind of, what we're going to talk about.
Again, again, I think that's the example for us to put our heads together. I don't know, right, you know, basically, and we can impose that, sorry.
Talk to us about indemnification.
Yes.
Let's indemnify.
I regret putting the word indemnification on there. But it was typically statute. So there it is. Their resolution is in your pocket, essentially, but it does it. But saying you can get stupid. We're actually. Don't have a lot of liability. Yeah. Which limits your liability to the common property as well. So. The more important thing in my mind about resolution of this is, we do have libraries, we do have facilities that are involved in the regulation. They're not gonna be able to ever. So, um. As for this, we should not be. Because you're gonna do a lot of work.
Is, is there another insurance or policy that we will follow this?
Yes, uh, we will. A meeting very soon. Coverage that. That's the things we recommend, if you're going to hear a lot about the special district association, I mean, association. They're right now, really, it's best. Most of the rings that special district association talks about. Hi, Special District Association. Where all of these entities are different. That's great, so it's worth joining with tools, but beware reading their needs to realize. Huge.
What's the determinant of the coverage that's needed?
Um, for them, it's.
Or for us?
It's, yeah, you, you'll, we have to get, um. For you or. You know, there would be coverage. There would be color, there would be needs, act, make your maximum liability, I think it's ability to pay. Our, our purpose, yeah, so that would be it. So if you have that coverage, it's amazing. But we'll, we'll get into that. How, make sure somebody comes in next week and decides to get in.
Is this one, is this a thing we only have to do once, or do we have to do this annually once?
Okay.
So I'm gonna move approval of resolution number twenty twenty three to five, dividing identifying indemnification.
Uh, item eight, the chief bishop, I couldn't listen here, but see. There's also a little discussion here about. Uh, says that you were funding right. Treasurer, county treasurer. Do, uh, the boss says that she, they run for you, but basically she's serving at your bank. Take over the. Some. Bringing with her, so those are issue, unless you don't take your, take over your. Then, of course, you gotta be a community issue. It's basically just a request for her to. And we'll need to establish what's, if it's a handle. Treasurer, county treasurer. It's trying to find out, if you've been collecting taxes since, uh. And taxes were levy January first. So there's probably good some. Probably half, but we. Yeah. So, um, so anyway. Will we make a motion to? Retain.
Who's actually left?
Oh, okay.
Let's go.
I move the board of trustees accept the proposal and sign the engagement letter. Oh, anybody?
Did the motion?
Okay. The board of trustees accept the proposal and sign the engagement letter for Cedar and Cedar and Vanderwall PC to serve as legal counsel. To the district, subject to termination by the board at any time. Uh. As presented or as a smart.
Just as.
As presented. Yeah.
I just want to follow up on the email I sent. Thank you for responding this morning. Um, I, I still would like to see your diversity, equity, and inclusion statement. I think that's important value that. So I still would like to see that. I mean, you referenced it. It's a personnel manuals and that kind of.
Yeah, it was absolutely.
I didn't see that.
Very awesome.
No, look at it again. I may have been, maybe that, so I. But that's my only. So. You can give us a. So it's, it's an EEO statement, but not. A DEI statement. Or an empty inclusion and diversity.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, because this, yeah, is required by federal law. Imagine, but, um.
It goes, it goes.
Well, an EEO state, I mean, that's what this is here, but I was looking for.
Yes, we can.
So we look forward to seeing it when it is created. Yeah, we, we prompted by this effort, so I feel like that's my contribution so far. Thank you.
And I think actually. Those law firms now. It's another scoring metric that is used to hire the. And also.
Any further discussion? Okay. So we go, um, the justice, the other ones. The help is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And I assume we can wait on accounting and bill. How did you guys? Chris, babe. We're not looking to join. Yeah.
Uh, I guess on your bills and stuff. Uh. They'll send them annually so that with forward and then we can vote on them. Yeah. Or me, I mean, monthly or whatever, send it forward and then they can vote. Yeah, I'll just bring them and then we'll figure out. Yeah. Try to get the county to write check. Yeah, exactly. Uh, thank you for that, by the way. Real.
So, and I just want to say thank you for your support for the last few years. It's just been exceptional. Cashing from the. Makes you. You have so much of itself in these institutions.
Thank you. Yes. All right, item nine. I'm quick, I want to ask David a question about other issues. Uh, counseling services or other. Subsuming. You'll let. You know, that we need to hire someone. Do the transition. To let the officers know. And then bring it to the body. We can approve, we can give you authority. I don't know if that has to be done after we do this internal idea.
I think you. I think you have. So you can hire who would have. Some agent who could, so I can counter for you so that then you could directly directions. So that is something you'll need to probably make a decision soon, right? Asking how we should.
Right, I think my, my point is that, um, there's going to be consultants and stuff that we need to hire. And I don't want to wait. If we don't have to wait on, on, um, at the body. On, you know, getting an IGA plays or something like that. If, if there's something to be done, you know. Whenever needs to be done, bring that to this body and, um. The. Give the authority or. That makes sense.
Yeah, I think for, based on previous conversations, you guys, you guys are thinking about which consultants we need to hire. So I think that's probably part of.
Okay, yeah, sure, okay.
I think this accounting piece is more for us as an administrative matter. Separate from. Kind of city.
Right.
Um. Until we actually start spending funds in a meaningful thing, I don't need something. And I suppose that's just. Are we providing dinner for ourselves at these meetings or are we just? That's an expense. You know, that we don't really have anything to do right now. First, we do set up bank account. County treasurer and send write checks for us to. Can you hire? So. You know, we're not really spending anything to forget.
I think there's just one cost or one thing. Keeping a library open an hour past its actual closing, is there a cost associated with that that we should be thinking? Okay. Okay. Okay.
Talk about it.
Okay, great. Maybe we can get an allowance.
Yeah, I mean, if it's important to people coming to dinner.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that, thank you. I just. All right, let's move on. Right, agenda item number nine. So you've heard a lot about the budget process and David. Um, August tenth. Luke will receive a number of word in the county assessment. We assess valuation for all the properties in the district. That is the day that our budget process begin. Uh, it's covered by our budget law. And there is a process that takes place between then and January one of the year. That will be you getting that assessed valuation, determining how much money you need. That you're going to get from your levy. Your budget and then establishing written budget, which are. These guys are. They asked. Because we have no clue. Um. That budget, the governmental spending budget has to be honest. Debt service. Operation. Yours right now have nothing, any of them, but you are going to be having operations expenses. You cannot spend any government funds without appropriating. So the process is, uh, you'll have to like to see what you intend to spend money on. And what you spend it on. Since we have no idea what you're going to spend on. Uh, that you have to do that to see proposed budget. And then, and we talked, there are two capital spending. There are no. There's no debt. Everything in your operations. That is the suppression budget to get us through this year. I believe that here we'll have to amend that budget slightly. Maybe not. Depends on. But we need to approve this budget. Because you can't spend anything. So that's what this budget does, and then budget message explains why the budget is as simple as it is. Um, and once you approve this, this will be. Which started to set up the system. All of your. Your trustee information, the votes, the district information, budgets, tax levies and all those things. By December tenth, uh, we have to approve a formal budget. And will that be the tax and certify the levy to the county commissioners. And on January first. So the tax money that's coming to the treasurer right now is for the valuations from last year. I'm sure you've heard the valuation search store. And, um. I have a district in Yale where you can imagine most of your fifteen million dollars. They've gone up ninety percent. So the state legislature has been messing around the last couple of years, changing the way we do our taxes. About that later. So right now, there is an entry at the end of the status report. Talks about, um. It's called whatever's happening. We're trying to figure out right now what. Your, uh, tax levy. But for now, here's a simplified budget, and, uh, in order to approve it, you have to have a full with hearing. The way we do that is the president opens the hearing. Over time, anyone who has the rights to comment budget. After they're done, they close the hearing, then we're good for changes to the. So at this time, that's the presentation of the budget. The budget has a operations administration sum of eighteen million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Capital project zero, debt service zero, total revenues of eighteen million, seven hundred and eighty thousand. And estimated beginning balance of zero. And closing balance. So that's the presentation of the budget. Discuss that. That or cannot.
Do we need a motion? I just have a question, Jen, it's not specific to the budget, you know, time, inner period. It's all. No. Assess this all. And before the. It's my understanding. District, district or special district can choose not to. Ask for its. We give the. The chooses. So I just wanted to raise that because there's been. I've heard. Um. They have the instances, the statistics have chosen not to. Fly. Cause they have enough. Have to.
What we do is. Because of paper. You know, we're. Um, so we've been doing. Tax reduction. Which is a request as you wave, refunding tax numbers. So if you, if we get that assessment on this, which will be changed similar. As they. Decisions. But, um, we're going to get way too much money. But a temporary levy reduction. Next year, another temporary. But without that special. Well, it's hard. That decision. So we. Seems like to be.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know that, like, Connor's friends done that. Be like. They said it every year, depending on their budget. I, I suspect that's what this new legislation would say. It can't require any.
So. One of the things I wonder about related to a budget, um, in the process is. At what time would we be in sync with? The will be in sync with the city and their. Budget hearing process or anything like that that would engage, you know, because there's been such a broad sort of community engagement aspect to. Budgeting and more transparency and citizen engagement and all that stuff and. You know, I've. You know, I just think that this effort is worthy of a very open, you know, robust process, but when, what? When would that be that we would be possibly more engaged and have somebody at a public hearing?
Um, you can have your, if you're public hearing anytime. But I think what's going to happen, it was a big part of David's campaign, is August tenth, they're going to get that. Valuation, so. Here's the value of all the. We're going to get next year. Then we move into the budget process where you start determining which money you really need. That behind these three categories, there is.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, there's a book of information. That they will. City. Go through that, then in October. I. Probably be better. Do that, then any time you can. And.
City's budget hearing process is October?
Uh, yes, October is when public hearings are. Published.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just think for engagement, it's just nice to, to have a. Sequence there that could align with people's interests, right?
The cities, uh, this year is. Um, so there's no further discussion.
No, I thought we were hearing, I thought we were, I was going to make a motion. We're still hearing.
Well, we haven't.
So I thought you did.
No, not yet. So, um, I'm now going to open a public meeting on. Budget for twenty twenty three. Library district. We have anyone from the public wishes to speak to this. So you know when I'm going to close in public hearing and in the motion.
I move the board of trustees adopt resolution number twenty two thousand, twenty three, five, dash, two, A, resolution summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adoptee budget. Before we put. Library district.
Second.
Second.
The second.
I, I.
Except. It's so. We have to. My.
Yeah.
We had to do it last year. Sort of by the levy, somebody did, I think you put together it. The city did it.
Yeah.
Here's the budget. Collect the taxes. So I think it was like one sentence.
I'm using. Dollar. Dollar. But this motion is from your ballot. They're not. For this. Due to clarity, the reason. Campaign. Whatever is on the ballot is maximum. We get to see the order before that. This operation, property taxes and amount to be collected from three point five, this was considerably less than eighteen point five million. But we. So the paper sets. This year. Great.
That was my. To determine that. Didn't. Uh, I didn't. I want to comment here. What we do. Is here. When you know. And what we want here. That's. Um, and there'll be. Reports on. As well as the status of. That you get. So, um. So um, that would just be an ongoing. For.
Well, I mean, appreciated explanation of what these things works, especially the. Another also, I think in practice, I think it's. Through this thing, that was to us. You know, should have to count to eleven this person. It was about a time that just makes me.
Yeah, that's the other thing about, they originally started doing this because. Go into the meeting. The reason.
And I do have a question and it relates to the. Just give me an idea of the types of consultants that we would be engaging.
Um, the account that first begins to make. Again, now.
And then likely, we're gonna find out, how do you guys all communicate? I think that may be the one. So. Because that was not, but that that's just. HR finance. Structure and to certain extent.
And would we see? These consultants through RFP?
Yeah. Starting out like it's. The likely you want are you.
Speak to somebody who's a person that was to do. So did that.
Obviously. It's a huge one, it's pretty critical. I G as well. But I'm not sure. So you'll have to discuss the timing. Sooner. It also. Having some tentative.
So another way to consider doing that. Someone you can do a break. Well, we have before. Temporary city. Because you're just really, really nervous about the determinations of facilities. Not really detailed. Respect to facility staff. They don't have a good handle. So hopefully there's something.
Yeah, there's not. That's just a race, you're right, that's like that. It's not gonna.
No, no, no. There is no place to feel comfortable with decisions, yeah, what the committee and the district to.
Think that's what I was talking about earlier. Is any of those people you need to get on, sooner or later, bring them by.
Remember a lot of those. Our perspective, all we care about. They, the city and the library who are kind of. So there are parts of that that are library than city. Essentially, the city, those are the things you're. The ones that are more in library. Two of the facilities and. They just stay the same person. Where the humans may be assigned to this.
So there's a lot of options to.
Yeah, again. Uh, attached to the. Is a. It will be given some idea. Actually, it's a simple idea, but we sent to the city way back. And like Mike said, it's recommended we add the city's name and stuff. That was just something. This is basically um. Rap of the. But you can see there are a couple of large areas. You know, we have. Reading, Queens. Facilities. Action is. Within the parts. So it's there where you look at, we go through it and I'd be much better if we could just look through it.
May I ask the interim, interim IGA we were discussing earlier, that is a separate agreement than the one you've drafted here. This is the like final.
Remember, I think in uh, Twitter. In. You did it, didn't we?
Yeah. It's very short and it covered those three issues.
Okay, okay, I'll get it. Cool, thank you.
I'm very, oh, that process statement. Is we need to leave this thing.
Yeah.
Um, we talked about some things we might. So it's probably the IGA, you know, that some documents attached to the IGA. Sure, when we have to. So I think what looking for is, if you look through the items that to address the IGA is. Of space for you to continue pieces of.
Makes sense.
The only. I actually never. Based off of this.
Yeah, and and just to so help this, I suggested I started in the IGA tonight. Because it's really long, really complicated. And it has a lot of. Positional positions, if you will, that. Was sort of gas. So I thought this process is something that the district, the city manager, if I interrupt, and then dive into this. As you see, see again.
Very easy.
Well, and you know, just one kind of quick thing on the L P S word, you can um. You know, I, I would imagine that Janet would be happy to provide you with. Him, she was the last person that provided me the light. But um. But there, there was a lot of work that was done on that, but one thing I will say is that, as I, you know, this is a value judgment on my part. Um, there are parts of that that I didn't know that if you're a lawyer, would it reach you? Um, and there are parts to that, but I don't know that. Our lawyer would agree to.
Yeah.
So, so. Just to kind of put that out there.
Something like such a cliffhanger.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's. People, buildings. And then. Honey, but you'll see that most of those balances.
It fired.
So, so what's the, can you just summarize the plan going forward for the, are there two IGAs sent, a short E? What's it gonna do, please? And, and are we gonna get involved? I'm sorry, I sort of lost track. How we're proceeding.
An interim IGA?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, we're all sounds like towards a interim IGA, towards addressing the need to. Getting staff, getting access to information. Um, so limited stuff. We will break down chunks, as David said, we probably. People working on different pieces, because I mean, any of those. Turned down. So some of this. So are you some? And those.
And so, uh, at our meeting next week, are we gonna talk about the interim IGA? Are we going to have a subcommittee bring us something between now and then, or how fast are we getting them in?
I would think.
That, I mean, that sounds reasonable, or maybe even a little bit beyond that, but it seems to me that probably. I don't want to speak on your behalf, but you know, you guys all talked about a kind of work, by effort that you guys are gonna engage in. It seems like the conversation about that might be.
So will there, will there be a document that addresses like city will, the three things you talked about, you know, city will. Continue to run the libraries, city, we will continue to collect taxes, city will continue to employ. Library staff, but is that document gonna get drafted? Or is that, is that the interim IGA?
That does, you know.
Okay, okay.
I think so.
So what happens between now? That document?
Well, I think that we will. Need to operate. Yeah, we will. Got a good promise.
Okay.
Yes, so I do think that we'll do that, we will do that.
Okay.
That, that, you know, it reduced into a writing and it, and it also, you know, you guys. You've approved the budget, you know, it kind of just sort of set up the expectation of. You know, that the city's doing this, there will be the expectation of the city's part being reversed. And, you know, there was a little more detail in there about, um, you know. You'll pay this, you'll pay that, you know, pay thirty bucks for overhead or whatever, but there were a bunch of different kind of natural. Uh, categories where the parties agreed that for various services that this. That the city was providing to the district, that they would be reversed, it's pre divulgated rates. Um, so.
Okay.
You know, it's not, it's not anything terribly complicated, but it does reduce the understanding.
And I guess. It sounds like your question is, are we okay without it?
Yeah, right, but yeah, I mean. Everybody's okay without it.
Remember right now.
Yes, okay.
Just.
We have a bank.
That's actually help, that's a helpful distinction.
Yeah, yeah, it's always good to keep that separation. But they're going to. And um. You know, it's just, it's always good to keep that in. They are the city, that's the city's. First stuff. But until then. They're responsible.
Have you heard from city council, whether they'll act as a, you know, sort of full body as it relates to the IGA? They'd be in a city and council, do you?
We, the last conversation we had with the council was uh. About any kind of IGA was all the way back. Still exploring the path of the resolution. So it's been a while since we had that conversation. Typically, the way IGA is that the city enters into work, it's actually city staff that work on those IGA's. Um, and then they come to the city council. Proven like. City council IGA, which is. And so, uh, obviously the council has to approve that, so if there are things through the negotiation that we believe. To check in with council on, we'll have to build that into our schedule. But that, that's all kind of yet to be seen.
But I'm silly. That this action item was a body kind of free that our officers will. Schedule, I'm talking about this, right? Diet based.
Yes, I think that's part of the discussion that it was trying to.
Yeah, right, yes, well, whenever you guys feel. Or I guess we feel a body that under, under interest. Like now.
Hopefully, at the next meeting, we can mention something, so.
Yeah. That would be awesome.
And while we're talking about that kid, that was the future agenda, which is so. The teenage student also part of the unit, and it's a real about how the schedule secrets needs and. How.
Okay.
Put your packets in. Okay, if you do it in one.
Here, here.
I have two different documents. I could have just stapled it all.
I got a paper clip.
It's really.
But I think if there's no further discussion with the IGA. That takes us to trust.
I had a single question about the money. That in interest bearing accounts, is it just that they're not bearing interest? Does anybody know, or?
I actually have. Probably a call trust, so I believe the call trust is actually. How we're backing. Not in the next three months.
Well, yeah, either that three months could be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, you're gonna have to take. Need to find the children. Yeah, most library districts use call trusts, which is. Last few years. You know, over the last two years, now you're. Back in interest bearing. Right, so you should be. You'll have to decide.
We are not for trust of revenue, this one that sits with the county.
I don't know what the county treasurer does, I think that might be a good question to ask county treasurer, because I don't, I don't know how they.
Yeah, I suspect the statute says, but I think David already covered. Because you're subject to the deposit action act. There's my certain investments that you can put your money in.
What is the word you're using, colored?
Callow.
Callow. Oh, okay, okay. You're using here.
It's just.
Okay, hello. Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, it's making two and a half percent. Nine million bucks that. No, making no interest is a little scary, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's.
Yeah.
Remember the orange. It's a sprout, that's what.
Yeah, I get that, I get that.
Need it.
I need it.
Um, oh, I just asked the thought about um. Conflict of interest, so is there a conflict of interest statement or anything that we be signing related to our trustees?
If you know, bring those around, that makes me, they're, they're just individual, I made it. What you'll get is um. Isn't, isn't. And. For the library district. Many times you really. But in terms of. Certain on the library foundation. And that will be laid out in the letter, and then the other part of this is. I do not represent the individual. Represent. But if there's a conflict of interest, we break records on something and it's invalidated, then I am going to go report. So like, no. She asks you something, I'll settle it to you. Hearing. For very simple. It's happened with the Secretary of State. That this conflict exists, we're competing. It actually. So it's a direct.
Um, so you mentioned just two minutes ago about something about like having this online, so I just wondered if. We would have a portal, like a Word docs. Place on either the website or something where, you know, documents are to access. Instead of an email that sometimes with the size of these documents, that's probably why there were two separate documents because of the size of it.
Yeah.
Um, and. Um, and will we have that? Can we have that? I mean, it's just a
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're thinking Yes, yeah, in another documents that could be like the bylaws or other things that are kept like just in that portal that you can access.
I think it's gonna need to be posted before the meeting, especially on like budget stuff. Eventually, so yeah.
Just to be clear that we cannot collect.
Um, the other thing that you just reminded me of is on that, that legal status ordinarily that being included as part of the packet. There will be times, especially over the next year, where there's information that is just between will be written top of the and it'll be separate from the whole packet. So it's not the information, it's just that happens. Do you think, do you know anything?
Which means what? Paper shredding?
No.
If we're gonna recycle.
Just don't have that.
But if we're going to dispose it, it's not putting it in the recycling. Right. And I just clear about that.
And that is my question for in second sessions. When we get into I think session. I think it would be helpful to have David's part of the discussion because I suspect they can't begin a second session, some team works.
Um, what we can do is have whatever meeting they give whatever information before so we have your regular it's a agenda. What is on the session? And you could do David, if he would, the staff posting that in session in case but it's
We don't need to have a separate bylaws in session because that's going to
Yeah, we'll have a notice on the agenda for the motion for a protective session. We'll add those and establish such to you.
Can we take the group photo? Over here. Right. Okay. Are there any other items before we adjourned? Um, just, just to make sure, I Secretary Treasurer, who's managing this? But it was, it's like preparing the minutes for
We can
It is You are the right person for this.
He is
Thank you.
That's it.
Same Should we do What is it in the in the I think, I think we must be done. Thank you, everybody.
Wow, that they really